Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And if you'll all stand and join me in the pledge in a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we can just take a moment of silence to remember what's important in our lives, our family, our friends, our communities, and... Thank you. We have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Move to approve the agenda, your honor.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. As submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes. The minutes today will be for the August 24th, 2020 regular meeting. Any corrections?
Move to approve the minutes from the August 24th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the August 24th regular council meeting as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. And we have the honor tonight to have a pre-scheduled speaker that has been one of the busiest people in the county here for a little while. I'd like to ask Green County Health Commissioner, Melissa Howell, to come forward.
Good evening, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you. I am here this evening to let all of you know that the Health District will have a renewal levy on the ballot this year. It's a .8 mil five-year operating levy. And of course, that goes to support all of the programs and services that the Health District provides. I provided some information ahead of time that you should have. It does go over all of the programs that we do, so... Excuse me. Birth and death certificates. Of course, in the environmental area, we do things like permits for water, septic tank. We do all of the permitting for commercial and residential plumbing as well. Then, the other programs that we have, we call them maternal-child health programs, are things like early intervention, the WIC program, home visiting, and then I think probably the thing that we're most well-known for is communicable disease. And so, I'll just take a few minutes and talk to you about the local response to a pandemic. And it's not going to be the normal lecturing that you may be used to, you know, on mask-wearing and social distancing and all of that. What I want you to know is that we have been around for 100 years. We celebrated 100 years this year. And so, if you can imagine people like yourselves 100 years ago coming together, for how would they respond to an outbreak of disease? And at that point in time, it was very much on the cities, the villages, and the townships to respond. And if you think that response is uncoordinated at this point, imagine what it was like when each individual area was trying to respond. So, in the last five years, I just want to review what's been going on, and then we'll talk a little bit about how we respond. So, when I came to you five years ago talking about the levy, what's been done since then, we've accomplished getting a federally qualified healthcare center here in Green County that serves, you know, all ages, and men and women. We relocated to another facility, and we also became accredited. In 2018... So, disease circulates around us all the time. But in 2018, you may remember that there was a hepatitis A outbreak, right after all of the opioids outbreaks and the overdose concerns. So, what was happening was that there's a lot of individuals who were IV drug users, who then were sharing needles, and we had this outbreak of hepatitis A. We had 34 cases that year. We gave over 366 vaccinations for hepatitis A and stopped that outbreak by February of 2019. Also, in 2019, we spent a lot of time responding to a different type of emergency, and that was your tornado. In fact, we were one of the first ones to get the messaging out to the community of how to protect yourself, whether it was let your family know where you are, or wearing long sleeves, protecting yourself, not stepping on needles, you know, not stepping on debris on the ground or something like that. So, these are the things that we do all the time. It was also the year that we passed tobacco 21 legislation. But I do want you to know, in 2019, one of the things that we feel very proud of is that here in Beaver Creek, for all the businesses that were affected, we had all of the food service operations open and ready to go within one week of that. Anybody who could be open was open. So, in 2020, what have we been doing, besides celebrating our 100 years? Well, we've been responding to COVID-19, and our response is very much the same as it was to hepatitis A or as it was to the tornado. We detect that there was a problem. And so, back in February in Ohio, what Ohio noticed, what the Ohio Public Health Workforce noticed, is that normally, your flu season will go up, and then it will start to come down by February. Well, on February the 1st, where normally we would have, over the last five years, that nice curve, it went off into a different direction. And instead of having just 500 hospitalizations for an influenza-like illness, we were at 1,000 hospitalizations. And so, Ohio started making the moves necessary to protect the population from this illness. The response was quick. What we did here in Green County is we set up what is known as Incident Command. So, we trained ride-along, police and fire, same way, set up our own Incident Command. We set up a multi-jurisdiction, multi-agency response to the pandemic. So, what that means is, we were assessing the community very early on, trying to figure out who would be vulnerable and get them protected, as well as what were the assets in our community. We knew that we needed to protect healthcare, and that we needed to protect our infrastructure. And we have been working very hard on distribution of PPE throughout the entire pandemic, which has kept our first responders safe. So, we haven't had any healthcare worker deaths. Our first responders have stayed working. Your communities are protected for police, fire, EMS services. The other thing we did is we brought on very early things like job and family services, the Mental Health and Recovery Board, because as you know, if you go out and you Google the impact that a pandemic has on your community, it has physical impact, meaning there could be death, there could be disability, there's psychological impacts, isolation among senior adults. We knew of the impact for children who were not in school. So, we brought on multiple agencies to help us in our response. But there's also social impact when you think about the weddings that have been missed, the funerals that have been missed, the homecomings that will be missed, and also the economic impact. So, the idea and the strategy that was used is to not lose too much of any one of those areas. I imagine that anyone who is in a position of leadership would not want to have to deal with this, but yet we are all dealing with this. You have tremendous leadership here in Beaver Creek. So, every couple of weeks, I would say, we send out an updated report to your leadership to share with all of you what's been going on, what are we doing? And since probably May, we've just been responding, and that cases are going up, getting individuals who are sick into isolation, and getting individuals who are exposed to the illness into quarantine. So, this is what pandemics have done historically for centuries. They impact all of these areas. We try and stress to all of our partners and all of the businesses that we've worked with, the chambers that we've worked with, it's not a question of if you were going to open, it's a question of when, and what needed to be put into place to protect your workers so that you could continue to work. So, we have been working very hard to do that. We've also looked at, well, how do we evaluate our success? I don't think any of us will walk away and say, "Wow, we did that." Some people talk about a new normal. I don't talk about a new normal. I kind of feel like it's going to be like when you go to the dentist, and they've done something for a cavity, and you have that numb feeling, and you're like feeling it, like, "What is that?" Or maybe a pandemic hangover. It's not going to be a new normal. It's just going to feel like a hangover, maybe for a little while. But we are getting back. We're bringing back all capacity. We're asking all residents, you know, "Please, please, go local, buy local," because we want economic recovery to be just as important as physical recovery, psychological recovery, social recovery. We want all of those things back. So, we are ready to reopen when it is safe and it is effective. So, currently, we have nearly 1,500 cases throughout Green County, and probably about 1,300 have recovered. Our current challenges are many of our nursing homes are being affected. And so, as you know, once it gets in there, it sweeps through. So, a lot of our positive cases, when you see them going up, it is directly attributable to the nursing home situation and the universities that we have. That's where our cases are coming from. What's ahead? So, again, our response is the same as it was to Hep A, as it was to the tornado. A lot of what you see on social media has absolutely nothing to do with public health. However, what is coming is, of course, vaccination. And there will be many arguments, discussions, disagreements, whatever, based on people's beliefs, their values, and their convictions. And that will be the stuff that you will probably see put on social media. So, if you're sensitive to those things, we encourage everyone, it could be a good time to not be on social media, or just be aware of what's going on, because it's more than what public health is doing. Some of it, believe it or not, is political. So... We have been endorsed by the Health Coalition of Green County for our levy, and we will continue to be here and do what we do every single year in protecting the health of this community and all communities in Green County. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And Commissioner, thank you for... and your staff for being so responsive. I know Pete is in constant contact with you, and sometimes I'm even in his office when we're talking to you. So, it's a pleasure to be able to just reach across the table and talk to the right people, and so we appreciate that very much. So...
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you all do.
Thank you, sir.
Any comments? I'll open the floor.
I just have a quick question. I appreciate you being here tonight, and I know you mentioned the social media aspect. I'm assuming, once we get to a point where there are vaccines or there is more information, your agency will have information available for residents, as well as someone that they can contact if they do have questions or they're concerned about some of the things that they're reading, and could we just be on the lookout for more information from you at that time?
Yes. So, our website has all of the information, the gcpH.info. They can go there, or of course, call the office at 374-5600, and they will direct your call to the appropriate person, depending on what the question is. So, absolutely, the information will be available. We've been told to prepare for vaccine as early as November, and so we are doing that currently.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner, I wanted to just congratulate you and the Health Board on that brand-new building you have.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, that's a great improvement over what you used to have, and as you've laid out the services that you effectively provide to citizens in Green County, that facility certainly helps to put you on the map.
It does, sir.
Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership in your department. I think it's been well-received in the county, and we really appreciate all the work you put into...
Yes. We've had tremendous support from the community. A lot of the things that you read are simply not true. I mean, the individuals who are ill that we're talking to on the phone very much appreciate us reaching out during their time of uncertainty. The individuals that are undergoing contact tracing and quarantine and all of that, again, the vast majority of people are very supportive and understanding and very kind. So, it's been a good experience overall.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing, PC 20-9.
This is an application filed by James Connell, 3650 Somerset Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The applicant requests administrative site plan and approval for 2.04 acres of land to construct a 12,000-square-foot office-lab addition to an existing building located at 4085 Executive Drive. The property is further located... or is further described as Book II, Page 6, Parcel 20 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present this evening? Would you please come... if you have something you'd like to present to us, please come forward, and if not, we'll let staff go. But you're welcome to come up. All right, we'll have staff input then.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. Before you tonight is an application requesting approval of an approximately 12,000-square-foot addition to the existing building at 4085 Executive The property is currently located within a planned development area, which does require site plan review and approval if there is a substantial change to the existing building. As I stated, the addition is 12,000 square feet, so that is essentially doubling the size of the building, so it is substantial. That site plan approval requires one planning commission hearing and one city council... two public hearings, one planning commission meeting, and one city council meeting as well. Both are public hearings. So, the property is located at 4085 Executive Drive. It's an approximately two-acre lot on the south side of Executive Drive. The current building on the property is 12,000 square feet, as I stated previously, and was constructed in 2007. The zoning of that property currently is RP1, which is Research Park, and it will remain as such. This is not a rezoning application, and research labs and offices are permitted within RP1 zoning districts. So, what the applicant is currently proposing as far as the building design goes is, they are doubling the size of the existing building. So, what they'll be doing is constructing an approximately 20-foot-tall addition to the back of the building with a couple of new bay doors. They will be using the same brick, the same dark-colored brick that they have on the existing building in the front, the red brick. They won't be using the white brick on the back of the building. As far as the setbacks go, it's pretty much in line with the existing building, so it continues to meet the required side, rear, and front yard setbacks. They're also proposing to essentially double the size of the existing parking lot. So, I believe the current parking lot... So, they'll be adding 25 additional parking spaces to the existing parking lot, which will bring the total to 44 parking spaces. At their maximum capacity, they're anticipating that they'll have approximately 25 employees, so the 44 parking spaces goes well above what is required now. And then, if the use were to change in the future, there still wouldn't be any issues with parking. So, staff is comfortable with the parking that is proposed for that addition. And then, as far as stormwater management goes, the Engineering Department didn't have any issues with that. There are existing detention ponds on the adjacent properties, and those ponds will accommodate any additional stormwater runoff for the site. As far as lighting, the applicant is just proposing to add some wall pack lighting onto the building, because the parking lot is so small. They're just continuing the use of the same lighting that they have on the building. There won't be any pole lights on site. So, staff is recommending approval of this request with the 11 conditions in the attached motion. And if you have any questions, I can answer them following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we would ask for anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this application, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on, and we will close the public input portion. Counsel input. Councilmember Curran, you got any comments you'd like to make?
No, Mr. Mayor, your honor.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Dorr.
Real quick, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to thank the applicant for the ongoing investment in Beaver Creek. Really great buildings, and seeing an addition is wonderful. Quick question on whether there's been any input. I don't see any from neighboring businesses, any concern. Anything that needs... thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
No, sir. I watch for the planning commission on this, and I think all my questions were answered.
Vice Mayor Adams.
No, I think as long as it meets the existing requirements, we should be good.
I agree. And so, I would also thank the applicant for making an expansion in our community, and it... you guys, you all have grown quite significantly since you opened your doors a few years back, so I want to thank you for that. All right. Hearing nothing else, is it... do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Now, we have to read this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of an ASPRA detailed site plan for resident sciences. On the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and the accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for an ASRA detailed site plan per 158.083 of the zoning code, and supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 11. I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? A motion and a second is to approve the abbreviated version of the ASRA site plan that we've received. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 20-20.
This is a second reading of an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council, amending Title 11 Business Regulations of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek by enacting a new Chapter 116 Massage Service Providers to regulate massage-related services in the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again, this is a second reading, and as council may be aware, since the first reading, we've had some discussions with other massage businesses, and there was some concern about just additional work on their behalf, you know, requiring additional steps and hoops for them to jump through. So, Planning Department conferred with the Law Department and City Manager, and we discussed on how to assuage some of those concerns, and one of the best ways to come up with that was actually to include an exemption in this. And if all the massage... the persons in the business doing massage are licensed by the state of Ohio as massage therapists, then that too would also exempt any business... that business from being required to get a license. We found that a majority of the businesses in the city do the medical massage rather than the just the strict... the relaxation massage, which is done by the practitioner and the nonlicensed. At least, that's how we define it in the proposed ordinance for your consideration. So, there's a few changes, and I believe you have a copy of those. The changes are highlighted in yellow. One is to how we define what a massage establishment is, and basically stating that if it's by anyone other than a licensed massage therapist, then it's considered a massage establishment for this particular ordinance. So, that's just amending the definition some in Section 116.02. And the registration required, again, we are proposing that, you know, if their business is a business that massage is done by anyone other than a massage therapist, meaning a licensed massage therapist by the state, then those are the businesses that need to register for this license. And so, with those few changes, staff is recommending approval. There are a few in Section 116.08 as well, just about maintaining written records, and just to clarify that it's the massage practitioner, independent contractor, or other employee. So, these are just a few cleanup languages. But again, the intent of this ordinance is not to create additional burden for legitimate massage businesses, and the intent here is to help with the illicit behavior issues that we've actually had complaints on. And this is just another tool in the toolbox for the city in a multi-departmental effort to try to curb some of those illicit activities. Yes, and based on with conferral of our legal advice, this is not a substantial change that we're lessening the overall ordinance. We're lessening the burden, so this is not one that requires us to go back and restart the process over. But again, we're recommending approval with the amended language procedurally, if council wishes to approve. And first, they should make a motion to change the Appendix A, and then a second motion for the overall ordinance. Be happy to answer questions following the public hearing on this.
All right. Thank you very much. And while this second reading would not normally be a public hearing, because of the modifications, the minor modification, is there anyone here tonight that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. Are there any input from council?
I have a comment. Randy, thank you very much for listening to the input of some citizens. I spent a long time late last week talking to probably the same folks that called you and made a lot of notes. I read the ordinance over the weekend and had made quite a few comments that I was going to ask tonight. But I think you've done a good job putting some, you know, practicality into the ordinance that makes it easy for our licensed massage therapists to operate professionally in the city. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, Randy, I'd also like to thank you for that, too. I know, similar to Councilmember Bales, I also had some conversations with a resident who was concerned about this, and I believe you addressed all those concerns in here. The one thing I would also like to add to, and Randy, if you could speak on this just a little bit, if you have more information, one of the things we were trying to avoid is, quote, "targeting" this business to any way that would make it appear illegitimate. And I think this is all very much complaint-driven, that we are looking at this industry because of the amount of complaints that we are receiving from residents for this specific area. Is that correct?
Yes, for these... a few particular businesses that, you know, I guess mask as a massage business. It wasn't because we read anything about massage business in general or heard anything. It was strictly based on complaints that we were getting from the... anonymously through the Police Department on our website.
Thank you. And as this is kind of just a first step, I would assume, too, that if we started getting complaints from residents, whether it's anonymous or otherwise, in other industries, that is something that we could look into at a later date as well, correct?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question.
Randy, I know it reads licensed massage therapist. If someone's doing a clinical or something like that, would they be covered under the license of the person there?
Yeah, there are some exemptions for medical doctors or chiropractors who do that as a secondary aspect of their business, not as their primary function, but those are covered.
Okay. So, just wanted to be sure of that.
I just want to thank you for your hard work, Randy. I also received the same similar phone calls, I think we all did, and it was a very quick turn, so we very much appreciate that. I know that I got my phone call Friday afternoon, and to have this by lunchtime today was great, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Garcia, you were the sponsor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to approve the recommended suggestions as submitted.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
What did you say now? We're moving to approve the change of the minor mod, right?
Is that what I said?
Is that what you were going to do?
To approve the changes as... That's okay.
Yeah.
Nope. Is there... Council, is there a better way that I should phrase that? Do you have a...
I would make it a motion to amend.
Motion to amend, okay. I would like to motion to amend, as submitted, the language that we've received.
I have a motion and a second to amend Ordinance 20-20 as received by staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, it's still your turn, Council.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve Ordinance 20-20 as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 20-20 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Ordinance 20-21.
This is a second reading of an ordinance repealing current Section 7507, signal...
This is a second reading of an ordinance repealing current Section 7507 Signal Device on Bicycle and 75.08 Lights and Reflectors Brakes of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adopting new Section 75.08 Bicycle Signal Devices of the Beaver Creek City Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. This ordinance was sponsored by councilmember Duer. Are there any comments that wanted to be added? Councilmember, you have a motion and?
Motion to approve ordinance 20-21.
I have a motion and two seconds to approve ordinance 20-21. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance 20-22.
This is the first reading of an ordinance to change the name of segments of Lance Road and Wallaby Drive to McGrath Way.
Thank you. Do we have anybody? Okay, Mr. Landrum is going to handle this one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that'd be me. Under the city's capital improvement plan for the extension of the segments of Lance Road that, you know, from basically where Dunkin' Donuts is, connect, right now, it's just a stub road. But that is to go on around and connect to the portion of just north of Dayton-Zenia, next to the funeral home there. The schedule for this, still have to work out funding, but a tentatively calls for the project design in 2021, construction, extended roadway, hopefully in 2022, but we'll, we'll see how that goes.
Okay.
The reason for this, though, and let me bring it up here. It's in the gray. It's kind of hard to see. We should have did that in a different color than the gray. But that, you know, right here is the Dunkin' Donuts, so that gives you the idea. Of course, right here is the new development with children's and the offices that will be there, the medical offices. And then, of course, down here is the funeral home, so it'll come out right down here. Now, it is proposed that the portions of Lance Road, Wallaby Drive, and the proposed extended roadway located in north of Dayton-Zenia Road and west of North Fairfield Road be renamed McGrath Way in honor of Jeff McGrath. Mr. McGrath was instrumental, bringing the currently active redevelopment project in this area to the city and in working with the developer and the city council to make it a reality. The developer has been contacted regarding this proposed street name change, and they fully support the effort, and they have submitted a petition as required by the Ohio Advice Code 723.04, requesting the name of the street be changed. The street change name will not impact any existing property address, since all the existing buildings in the vicinity of the street name change are addressed either North Fairfield Road or Dayton-Zenia Road. And myself, a city manager, is strongly recommending adoption of this ordinance.
All right. Thank you. This is the first reading of this ordinance, is, so it is a public hearing. Is there anyone present that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion. Comments by council? We can start over here on the right this time, if you like.
Your honor, I am completely in support of the ordinance. It's a good way to honor Jeff and all the work that he's done on the benefit of the city, so I have no other comments.
Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with councilmember Bales. Jeff McGrath was instrumental to the city and did some terrific work in terms of zoning and planning and many other areas, and this is well warranted, so thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
I would just echo whatever one's already said.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Same. I, I could say a lot of things, but I think it would probably bring me to tears, so I very much appreciate this. I don't think I'd be sitting in this seat if it weren't for Jeff, so, thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
A fitting tribute to a true visionary, your honor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
I think this is an excellent idea. I know years from now, people probably won't remember who Jeff McGrath is, but this is a way that he can live on in Beaver Creek, and, because he did a lot for this community over his time here, so, yeah, I fully concur.
And I'll just echo what everybody else has already said. I guess go back a little further. I mean, I started with Jeff when Jeff was first hired here, so it, I've known Jeff for a long time and watched him progress through the ranks and, and demonstrate his abilities that we all benefited from. And so, this is a, this is a great catch, that Pete found this road where we don't have to go through a, a process of readdressing any properties. And so, I give Pete a hats off for having that in the back of his mind already, so, to make this happen so easily. So, that's all I have to say. So, do I have a motion to move this to the second reading?
Mayor, I move to move ordinance 20-22, street renamed, to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-22 onto the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinance 20-23.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue and to authorize interfund advances for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020, and to amend ordinances 19-30, 20-06, 20-07, and 20-14.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. This is a, almost a quarterly thing that we do now with supplementing appropriations and certifying revenue. Lately, it's been a lot of certifying revenue from federal agencies, from all the disasters that we've participated in. But the first item is the general fund. When we were doing the 2020 budget, the street fund, because of all the expenditures related to the tornado event, was going to bring that fund balance down below the 20% criteria that council's established. But in order to balance that budget and to get them to the 20%, we were going to advance the funds needed to get them there, and that was $570,000. We're going to transfer from the advance from the general fund to the street fund, pending the receipts from FEMA and Ohio EMA. We weren't sure when that money was going to come in, and they actually did it very expeditiously, and we received some of that money, which will be the next item. But what we thought we would do, just to clear up the budget process, was to eliminate that advance. So, again, we're basically reversing out what we had in the budget, so, to show that that advance was never done. So, that's step one. Step two was the, like I said, we did receive two reimbursements from FEMA and the Ohio EMA from the tornado disaster. A lot of the costs, like I said, were out of the street fund. When the money comes in, the, not only the street fund, but we had police overtime, some of the other administrative fees. So, we had park levies that were affected from our folks responding from the park side to handle the tornado. And then also, the golf course had some losses related to that event for the cleanup for the day or two afterwards. So, what we need to do is certify that, a second distribution coming in from FEMA and Ohio EMA, and then allocate it back to the funds that expended those funds out of there. So, that's the second transaction you see in there. Moving on to the next disaster, the coronavirus, House Bill 481. We actually did receive a first distribution from Green County in July for $557,475. Subsequently, they passed another round of funding for the city to cover expenses related for dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. And in August, we received a second distribution for $278,738. So, what we need to do there is certify the revenue coming in, and then, again, appropriate that funds for use for covering the expenses related to that for the funds that actually spent that money. So, that's what that transaction does, is actually brings the money in and then appropriates it for use to cover the expenses already to date and the ones that are still pending that are out there and been encumbered. The last one is the miscellaneous trust fund. We set up a fee, a new fee this year in 2020 for, it's an athletic fee at Rotary Park. And what they thought they would do was collect $75 per team for each tournament that could be used for improvements at Rotary Park itself. And because it was done after the budget was completed, and they weren't exactly sure what the revenue would be, they, we didn't really budget anything for the income coming in, the revenue generated, and they certainly didn't think that they'd have enough to expend the money to do some of those improvements. Well, both of those things turned out to be wrong. They actually did get some money in. They've gotten $16,275 that came in, based on that new fee, and they actually want to spend it right away to get some of the dugouts improved this fall. So, what we need to do is certify the revenue coming in, the $16,275, and then appropriate the expenditures of the $15,600 to do the six dugout improvements this fall for the softball leagues out there and the baseball teams. So, those are the items on this appropriation and certifying the revenue and also the cleaning up of the interfund transfer. Be happy to answer any questions. I know that's a lot of detail, and again, a lot of revenue coming in, which is always a good thing. Normally, I'm up here just appropriating expenditures for outliers that we didn't budget, but these are actually good ones that, again, we've been working a long time to get, and we finally did, get the, the revenue generated from those disasters.
Well, thank you very much, and thanks for finding, knowing where all that's supposed to go and how it's supposed to work. I mean, it's beyond me, so. Any comments from council? All right. Do I have a motion to, this, no, we need, yeah, we do need a motion to approve ordinance 20-23. This is just a single reading.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve ordinance 20-23.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-23. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you. Next is Resolution 20-26.
This is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Thank you.
Good evening again. This is our, really, the third phase of the budget process for the 2021 budget. You recall, the first phase, we approved the tax budget. That was back in July. Second phase is that the county budget commission normally has a hearing and goes over the tax budget that we submit. This year, they've kind of waived that process, but they still have to approve what we submitted to them anyway, and they actually did that. And that prepared a preliminary, the tax rates and the amounts that will be generated from the levies. Again, you recall that the tax budget is really designed to let them know that we need the tax levy money to operate the city. So, they agreed with that. They generated these rates and amounts. And what we have here is the process of approving it. What I wanted to show you here, and has been the controversy for the last couple of days, I guess, is that everybody got their evaluations. And again, just wanted to let you know that this is a six-year reappraisal year. Again, it happens. It's required by the ORC for the county auditor to go through this process, basically just updating the values of the homes for, and all property in the city for current market conditions and increase or decrease in the value since the last reappraisal. So, again, what you're seeing is, is that there was a significant jump on, I mean, not only in Green County, but basically everywhere during this reappraisal for the property value. So, again, ours actually increased $129 million from the previous year, which you can see, they've been pretty modest the last few years. And again, this was the, the big jump because of the reappraisal. So, the bottom line is that these are still preliminary numbers. Now that we've certified this, we hopefully will approve the resolution. We send this back, and then the county auditor actually has to get the estate to approve the rates and the amounts, and those get certified to the county auditor. And again, we'll recertify it with us at the end of the whole process. Going back to the reevaluation, I, I just wanted to mention here that, again, everybody got their statements. You can appeal the evaluation, if you'd like. Up through October 23 is the first round. And then, once they certify the actual numbers and cement those, then there's an appeal process for the residents or the businesses to begin in January through, I think it's through March of 2021, to have them review the rates and the valuations that they put it on, the, you know, property owners' evaluations. So, again, just to let you know that you have a window of opportunity to take a look at that, make sure it's reasonable. If it's not, there's a process that you can go through, through the Green County Auditor's office. And again, they have that all linked on the website, if you need the instructions, how to go about that. It's a fairly easy process, but just wanted to let everybody know, because this is a hot topic this weekend. So, as I said, there'll be a process where they'll certify the actual numbers, and then we actually, they didn't change from the tax budget, the original numbers. I don't anticipate them changing again, but again, everything is subject to change until the state approves it, so. And just to let you know, again, that's the third phase. Right now, we're working on the actual budget itself, just to give that heads up. We've projected out the ending fund balances, the projected ending fund balances for this year, projected out the revenues and expenditures for each fund. And the meetings start with the department directors and city manager to evaluate all the expenditures and revenues associated with that. They start on October 7. And then, any adjustments will be made, and then we'll be presenting that to city councils part of their work sessions. And those are already scheduled for Monday, November 18, and Wednesday, November 20, that they will be advertised, and they are open to the public. We would appreciate the public coming out and taking a look at the budget. The budget will be in detail. It'll be available for them to review, and hopefully, we'll answer all the questions and get that finalized. And then the final step is to adopt the actual 2021 budget in our December 14 meeting, the one and only December meeting, and slate it again for Monday, the 14th. So, with that, staff is recommending that we approve the, accept, and accept the rates and amounts that are, been approved by the Budget Commission and certify those to the county auditor.
Thank you. Any comments from anybody?
Very quickly, just, can you go back on the slide about the work session dates?
Yeah.
I, I want to make sure 2020's a mess, but I think the Monday date is actually November 16, and then Wednesday is November 18. Is that what you're getting to council?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Because instantly, I thought, there's, that can't be right. I just wanted to make sure I'm here on the right dates as well, as well as the rest of the public that we want here. But I just want to make sure I'm available on the correct date.
Yeah, I didn't do that, so the public shows up on those dates, and the meetings are over. So, I, you know, I just, looked at the calendar wrong or something.
Probably 19, not a, not a problem.
Thanks for correcting that.
All right, very good. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-26. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Moving on. Next is Resolution 20-28.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the City of Beaver Creek to become a member of the proposed Wright-Patterson Regional Council of Governments.
Mr. Landrum, you handling this one?
That's me again, sir. With this, a meeting, Mayor, you were with me. You remember, it seems like a long time ago, was earlier in a year.
It was a little while ago.
Before COVID. It was pre-COVID. We were invited to the Dayton Development Coalition meeting in Dayton. Few people around, cities around the base area were invited, and it was actually Commissioner or State Rep, let me see, Representative Turner was there. And this was an idea, I don't know if it was solely his, but he was definitely sponsoring And this was an idea, I don't know if it was solely his, but he was definitely sponsoring this idea. And what this idea is, what you have before you is an agreement establishing a regional council of governments pursuant to Chapter 167 Ohio Revised Code will be known as Wright-Patterson Regional Council of Governments, WPRCOG, COG, what we call it. Those political subdivisions I referred to and entities participating in an agreement will be Beaver Creek, Dayton, Fairborn, Huber Heights, and Riverside, as well as Bath Township. The purpose of this is to coordinate the powers and duties of the members, member boards to better serve and benefit the economic development and land use planning of the region to promote the compatible development and activities that support the growth and operation of Wright-Patterson Air Force Base and as well as Springfield, Springfield Air National Guard Base within the COG's political subdivisions. The COG is formed to create significant cooperation between the communities surrounding Wright-Patterson Air Force Base with the initial and primary purpose of seeking funding and assistance for commissioning a regional combined use plan study. So that's the initial purpose of, of this whole thing. Now, later on, with, it can expand to a cooperative effort of other objectives as approved by the Board of Directors. Now, here's why I want to say very clearly, this is written into the agreement so that there's no misunderstanding, because I had this objection myself when I was reading some of it. You know, anytime you, do you, what do you lose if you, if you gain anything, but you don't lose anything here. The authority of the COG is only for the objectives as approved by the Board of Directors and shall not interfere with any independent authority of any member, community, or political subdivision, period. So I just want to make sure on that. The resolution here that you have, before you authorize the city manager to sign the participation agreement and to appoint the city manager as it, or his designee to participate and vote as part of the COG business meetings. And I think I've sent over the past, well, actually, since this happened, I've sent information to you guys, I think a PowerPoint presentation that was much more in-depth about the role of this and what would happen with this. But I, the city manager is recommending approval for this from city council and be more than glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. And this, my impression of the first meeting with the congressman and the DDC was that the emphasis and the logic here was to sort of related to BRAC in the past, for that we know what the infrastructure and, and what can go where and what can't go where around the base. So this, this becomes then, I believe, is where it's headed, is to just be a body that will be able to communicate with all the parties around the base, be able to jointly look for funding for infrastructure or other, other needs. And of course, the base is very excited about this as well, that they want this, it makes life easier for them as well, when they know what's possible. So whether it ends up there, that was my impression when I met with the one meeting that I had. Any other questions, comments?
Question for the manager. Who staffs this COG? Is it going to be the eighty-eighth wing at the base that will provide the staff manager, or this is not answerable now?
I don't think that's necessarily answerable. There's not going to be too much of staff as far as that goes. The DDC is going to be partnering in it. So I imagine the Dayton Development Coalition will be one that will be stepping up to help. And, you know, it's just like, you know, we're, we're trying to create this. One of the main reasons is that it creates a funding stream potentially for grants and stuff that DDC even, or MVRPC, or things wouldn't be able to get to apply for. So with this approach, we hope to get, be able to get funding, to have the studies done that will help us for the betterment of the region. I mean, our, our focus is going to be the region. The COG is going to be, what can we do to help Wright-Patt overcome any issues to stay here and to grow Wright-Patt? Then there is that second layer that myself, as your representative and as city manager, I'm going to look out for Beaver Creek, of course, as every other city manager's going to be looking out for theirs. But at times, there may be that, you know, what's best for the whole region, that, you know, we want to make sure Wright-Patt and the Springfield Guard Base doesn't have any limitations, that we're not the ones getting in the way of them bringing something here. That's, that's what's important as, as a region. We want to make sure that, you know, you never know if it'd be space force or, the, it's limited, limitless on what could happen and could be brought to Wright-Patt as the growth happens. So we just want to make sure that we're prepared with this land use plan as a whole. Again, it does not give up our individual land rights or our own planning or anything like that.
Okay.
I have one question. I think that the mission is, is fantastic. I think it will only benefit the city of Beaver Creek from an economic development perspective to get on the same page as Wright-Patt, frankly, all the surrounding communities that are in place. My question is, has there been any discussion about cost of membership? Because, you know, I, I kind of share your concerns, Councilmember Curran. I, I think that there's a lot to establishing a regional combined planning document, and perhaps the base is going to step up or the DDC, but I just didn't know if there had been any discussions previous to now on member city, membership.
There, there is in there that will share the cost, but there, we don't know what we don't know at this point in time. We're hoping that the funding that we'll be able to get for grant will be significant, and like you said, that there'll be other entities that will be able to, to step up if there was a cash match or something of that, of that nature.
Did they talk about timing, when they'd like to get the organization, the COG established?
ASAP, ASAP. They're, they're hoping that we could have a first meeting if, if all of this, all the cities are, I think, planning on going through the approval process now and in October, so maybe even in November, get it up and running.
We'll probably know something by our budget work sessions.
Yeah, potentially. But the, the whole thing with that, I don't think there's going to be like a cost necessarily for staff. Like I said, I think DDC's going to help out. There's going to be an appoint, part of the board will appoint a, kind of like, you know, we're for the COG, we're the COG for the RERT, the Regional Emergency Response Team. We're the fiscal agent as well. So I'm not volunteering, please. But there will be, one of the cities will be probably appointed as a fiscal agent to run expenses through, just like what we do for the RERT. So I, I don't imagine there's going to be any really, like, we don't have administrative costs for the RERT as far as that goes. But I don't think there'll be a cost for that. But yes, it, hopefully, we'll have a first meeting, but I don't think we'll know the cost unless we get a grant and the grant comes through and it's a 25% cash match of blank amount, is it DDC, or is there any other entities that will, helps supplant the, the grant funding or not, and then we'll bring it forward. So I'm not quite sure we'll know by November. If we do, I, I hope to have our first meeting by then, which would appoint, I think, the chair and fiscal agent and the treasurer, so. More info to come as soon as I know it.
All right, anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty dash twenty-eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution twenty dash twenty-nine.
This is a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by Joseph Nelson and Molly Nelson with other, with interest by others for the county line road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. In 2021, a joint project between the cities of Kettering and Beaver Creek is planned to improve the portion of county line road, beginning just north of Indian Ripple and ending in the vicinity of Willow Run Drive. The goal of this project is to increase the width of this existing three-lane pavement section to five lanes to match the width of the pavements immediately to the north and into the south of that area. In order to construct this project, it's necessary to buy some additional temporary right-of-way for grading purposes and such. And on the Beaver Creek side of the project, there's fifteen of these temporary easements. Efforts have been underway for the past several months to, to purchase these, and regretfully, three of the fifteen, we haven't been able to secure an agreement with the property owners, making this action necessary so this project can continue forward. Again, there's three of these. The first one before you is the, the Nelsens. They're at 2784 County Line Road. The interest we're looking to secure is, is a temporary grading easement. And the purpose for the temporary is to regrade their driveway, because when the road is widened, the elevation of the street is going to change a little bit. So in order for them to have a proper transition from their driveway to the street, we need to go back on their property just a bit and reconstruct that, that piece of driveway. The size of this temporary is about eight-hundred-and-six square feet, and the appraised value is three-hundred feet. And again, for this to go forward, we'll, we would ask that city council consider passing this resolution and the accompanying resolution that comes next on your agenda. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
I just have one quick question. Can you just speak to the efforts that were used to reach out to the residents in order to try to obtain this without coming to council?
Yeah, absolutely. In our standard procedure is we, we actually have to have, and a certified real estate appraisal determine fair market value for the land. So what we'll do is we'll hire a professional company, in this case, the company is O.R. Colon, and they'll take that certified value and they'll approach the property owner in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code. There's a whole process that's set up in, in the law that we have to follow in order for the city to be able to utilize this eminent domain action. So again, they'll get the certified value of the property, they'll approach the property owner, and they'll try and negotiate a price, a settlement to this. With these three property owners, they, they weren't responsive. Shovel efforts were made to, to contact them, to try and negotiate, and they, they weren't responsive. I should mention, though, however, that when Kettering passed it back to us, because they were handling right-of-way, they referred it back to me to, to do, take this final step here. I managed to get in contact with, with all three of these property owners and discuss their concerns. And I, I think with the Nelsens, I think there's a good chance that we'll be able to reach an agreement before it goes to court, but just to be sure, so we don't jeopardize the, the project's timeline, we have to take this action, I think.
And I'm assuming in your conversations with them, they were made aware that this could be a possibility if for some reason they chose not to go and turn to negotiations with you personally?
That's, that's correct. I told them we were willing to talk, but yeah, I also informed them that tonight was the first night it would be on the agenda, to give them the opportunity to show up to council and express their point of view if they wish.
I appreciate all your effort in that, so thank you for explaining that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a comment. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm always baffled at the reaction of citizens for temporary right-of-way. And in this case, it sounds like, you know, you have done a great job, including O.R. Colon and yourself, to reach out to them and explain that it's temporary, and it's, it's almost temporary inconvenience for utilizing a piece of your property for a period of time during construction, and by the way, we're going to pay you for it. So I've got no problem with this. Thank you, Jeff.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I had the same question as Councilmember Garcia, so thank you. Have the Nelsens or any of the others provided written input or anything else that we?
They have not, just, again, I met with Mr. Nelson, looks like September the fifteenth. We talked about the project. I had the surveyor place stakes to, to monument where exactly the temporary is going to be. We talked about the project, and I, I think his, his concern honestly is that when his plat was dedicated back in 1961, a rather large piece of road right-of-way was dedicated back in 61. However, the road doesn't really match where the right-of-way is, so I think he was surprised to learn where his front property line actually is to where, where he perceived it to be, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty dash twenty-nine. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance twenty dash twenty-four, which is the ordinance that follows this resolution. And anybody have any further questions? This is just the actual appropriation, is that correct?
It is, yes.
Yes. Oh, this is a first reading of an ordinance. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to?
She has to read it.
Well, speak of. Please, read it.
This is an ordinance to appropriate certain real property interest owned by Joseph Nelson and Molly Nelson for the county line road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Now, is there any further input or questions on this? First, I'll ask, is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. This is the accompanying ordinance that follows the resolution we just approved. Is there any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve ordinance twenty dash twenty-three.
Moving it to the second reading.
To the second reading.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty dash twenty-four, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Moving it to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution twenty dash thirty.
This is a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by Eric J. Davis with interest by others for the county line road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, again, Mayor, this is the, the second of the three properties. Mr. Davis is at 2714 County Line Road, and very similar to Mr. Nelson, it's a temporary grading easement for the purpose of reconstructing his driveway, so he has a proper transition from his garage and property to the, where the new street's going to be. It's a little bit bigger in size. It's about thirteen-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet, and the value is four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any input, any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve resolution twenty dash thirty?
Mayor, I need to approve resolution twenty dash thirty. So I have?
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty dash thirty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance twenty dash twenty-five.
This is a first reading of an ordinance to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Eric J. Davis for the county line road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
And again, this is the accompanying ordinance to support the resolution we just passed for appropriation. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move forward. Any input from council? Anything else from staff? Okay, do I have our motion?
So move to move this to the second reading.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance twenty dash twenty-five on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution, or next is resolution twenty dash thirty-one.
This is a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by Robert H. Neff with interest by others for the city, or for the county line road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And again, this is our third and final one tonight. Very similar to the other two, the purpose of the temporary grading easement is to reconstruct driveways. It's a little bit bigger in size. He has a total of two temporary easements, a total of about eighteen-hundred-and-seventy-three square feet. Appraised value of the land is nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
Okay, thank you. So they, all three of these then are just temporary, of course?
Yes, they are.
All right, any questions, any input?
Yes, this one, if I'm looking at it correctly, has two different driveways or two different components?
Yeah, he has one for his own driveway, and Mr. Davis's driveway is very close to his property line, so there's a little bit of temporary on his far north property line from Mr. Davis's driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty dash thirty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance twenty dash twenty-six.
This is the first reading of an ordinance to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Robert H. Neff for the county line road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. This is the accompanying ordinance to the resolution just passed. Any further comments? Do I hear a motion to move it to second?
Motion to move ordinance 20-26 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-26 to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. It's almost like making board appointments this year. All right, next is Resolution 20-32.
This is a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for funding through the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required.
Thank you. And you didn't get to sit down, did you?
I did not, no. Yeah, staff was recently informed that the Ohio Public Works Commission will, after all, be accepting applications for new projects this year. Typically, you'll see those applications come through in the July-August timeframe. But because of the COVID situation and other things at the State House, it was delayed. And we're fortunate to have another opportunity to apply for these funds this year. The project that staff recommends to apply for is an improvement project along Shakertown Road between North Fairfield Road and Carthage Drive. The project, the proposed project would add a eastbound left-turn lane on Shakertown Road at North Fairfield Road, and it would continue on through the intersection and add curb pedestrian facilities on both sides of the roadway, storm sewer and curb, all the way to Carthage Drive. In addition, there's a double-barrel culvert we would replace with this project to improve drainage through there. That area right there is prone to flooding, and taking out those pipes and putting in a larger-sized structure is going to improve drainage in that area, we believe. The overall estimated cost of the project is $1.8 million, where we'd recommend a grant request for half of that, for $900,000. I should also mention that there's an existing special assessment. When they did the Cedar Brook Farms development, they agreed to a special assessment. So of that remainder, $280,000 would be part of that assessment. So the city's ultimate share, if the grant's successful, would be around $620,000.
Interesting.
And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? How many of the people that live in that plat realize that there's an assessment possible? That'll be interesting.
I do have one on the eastbound left-turn lane. Is that on Shakertown?
Yes, it is.
On the west side?
It would be going eastbound, so the construction would be on the west side of the intersection.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes?
Your Honor, I just want to take a second to thank you, Jeff, and your team, because historically, you've done a great job at applying for, you know, OPWC grants as well as state and federal grants. And anytime we get an opportunity to take 50% in this case off the project and get it done for our residents, I think it's fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Do I move?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-32. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is Resolution 20-33.
This is a resolution authorizing the submittal of applications for federal FAST Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening again. We also learned that there's a grant opportunity also through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. And this is their typical timing for their grant cycle every year. This year, we're being limited to only four applications. In the past, we've been, had the opportunity to submit as many as six or seven. But this time, they're sticking pretty firm to the only four applications. So in meeting, we are recommending these four projects. The first one would be another improvement along Kemp Road. Let me get my highlighter working here. It would be just to the east of the project that's currently under construction. So it would begin at Meadow Court and go to Blue Wing Drive was where it would end. And that would be a similar treatment. It'd be three lanes, curb, drainage improvements, and pedestrian facilities on both sides of the roadway. Project number two, there's an area of concrete pavement just north of Crossings Boulevard going up to I-675. That concrete pavement is in not very good condition. So we want to apply for grant funds to replace that concrete with asphalt. Project number three is along Dayton-Zenia Road. And we would go Meadow Bridge, or I'm sorry, Meadow Bridge to Darlington. We would extend the existing five-lane section to Haynes Road. And that would get us just past the main elementary, like right here where the three is. So it would get us right past the elementary school with that. And the fourth and final project, right now, we have an enhancement project currently under construction along Colonel Glenn Highway. That project goes from Zink Road to east of Presidential. We would recommend an application to extend that treatment further to the west to go from Zink Road to Grange Hall Road. And again, it would be brick pavers and decorative lighting features of that nature. And we have this, we have the recommended order also, but council is free to change the order as you see fit. There's more points awarded the higher that we rank it. So the higher the ranking, the more likelihood that we'll get the funding.
All right. Any input, any comments?
On number two, North Fairfield Road reconstruction, that would almost change the entire area from concrete to asphalt. And I think that would be great, so.
Yes, sir.
But there'd be a component part, I think, still missing. So that would be a future grant, hopefully.
Yeah, I think it would just be the area that's concrete pavement, which again begins at crossings and goes up to I-675. The idea would be to remove that old concrete pavement and put down the full-depth asphalt.
Be a very nice addition. Thank you.
I think it's also important to note for our residents along Kemp Road that this funding application is being submitted now, but construction isn't for, you know, years.
It would be five or six years.
Five or six years. So the interruption that they're, you know, they're facing day-to-day right now, they'll have a significant break between when it's finished and three or four years go by, and then this one would start.
That's correct.
And so that's important to note. Also, I'm a firm believer in the Colonel Glenn Highway project. As I started that project years ago in another municipality, I'm glad you're carrying it on, and I think it's a great improvement.
Yeah, it'll be nice. I should also mention that Fairborn is starting their phase of it in 2021. So it's not just going to be a Beaver Creek thing. The whole corridor is going to be improved.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Do I move?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-33. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is Resolution 20-34.
This is a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Land and Water Conservation Fund.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Happy to be before you this evening. Wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. We've become aware that there's a grant available through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. We're before you this evening, asking council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for this. The maximum match for this particular grant is $500,000. We're actually looking at securing the maximum amount. Our goal would be to try and secure that $500,000. The funds that we use to match that would be our 712 fund. Our 712 fund is something that comes to us not from our levy dollars or from general fund dollars, but these are fees that are acquired as part of our residential development program. It allows developers to either donate parkland or if for some reason parkland's not acceptable to either staff or the developer, we have an opportunity to consider fees in lieu of land. And that's the dollars that we're proposing to use to match this grant for. The goal is to purchase 100 acres, and staff is recommending approval of this. We've identified a parcel in Research Parkland. It's identified on the map as letter M in this region. The area is, two parcels, actually, it's greater than 100 acres. And our first priority would be to secure the land to the south, starting here, orienting you along Shakertown and Grange Hall Road, running north and south, securing 100 acres from the southern border of the portion north. However, there has been some interest in development of that location. We're working with Research Park at this point. We believe that our first priority will be able to be secured. However, if there is a developer interested, we would yield right-of-way to them and secure the 100 acres from Patterson Road, south, to somewhere approximately in this area, also running along Grange Hall Road. We are running on a deadline. Applications are due by November 16th, and we should be notified sometime in the spring, whether we receive those grants with those dollars, and the final acceptance of that coming in June of 2021. So we should know midway through next year. Happy to answer any questions. We have had an opportunity to talk to City Council about this in the past, but we are bringing forward and requesting approval of this resolution at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Mike, is letter M, then, it's roughly close to 200 acres? You're going to take?
140. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, letter M is about 150 acres approximately is the total. So we'll see what happens with the remnants. Could be leftover for development, or could be other opportunities in the future with the city.
Well, yeah. I mean, I'm a big proponent of parkland preservation, so I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, this goes a long way to preserving that green space that people like, encourage us to do when we can. And it's putting the money that these developers have paid in lieu of parks to good use. So it's something we keep our fingers crossed. If we're 50-50 match, I mean, that's hard to beat. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-34. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Decision items. Motion to appoint clerk of council as designated for public records training. You want to do that?
I so do.
All right. Do we, do we need any further explanation? Do you have any input?
Unless you guys want to go. I was originally scheduled to go to a training, but they have since moved it out to next year, and we need to get this done this year. So they do have an opportunity for an online training. So I'll be doing, sitting in my office for three hours, participating in that instead, so.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to appoint Diane MacIsaac?
I move to approve Diane MacIsaac, clerk of council, as Beaver Creek City Council's designated to attend public records training per Ohio Revise Code Section 109.43.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Diane MacIsaac as the records training. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is acceptance of TIRC.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the green development back in 2001 through 2007 and '08, part of the contingencies of the development was improvement of Indian Ripple Road and as well as some public improvements within the green. And that was financed through tax increment financing. And as part of that, there's a requirement for an annual review by a TERC or a Tax Income Review Board, or TERC, the Tax Incentive Review Committee. And that, we met back in August. And as part of that presentation that I gave to the TERC was some financials on the taxes of the green, the property taxes of the green, and showed that over the last couple of years, there's been an excess revenue collected through the property assessments. And that excess revenue fund right now has a balance of $850,000. And it's projected to continue to increase over the next several years. So one of the requirements is, well, the TERC makes a recommendation, and City Council chooses to continue the TIF annually. And this is that annual approval. The TERC does recommend approval of this continuing without any change. There's a motion, and the verbiage in that motion is part of your packet on the reverse of the agenda item. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. But again, the TERC and staff do recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any input or any questions? Do I hear somebody making a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to accept the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Committee and adopt its findings that the green TIF continue with no change.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, let's see, I'll have to read this again, too. Motion and a second to accept the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is golf advisory board council representative. We just might happen to have a council member that lives right next to the golf course, do we? Can you explain a little bit about the board, Mr. Bales?
Absolutely, Mayor. Well, I don't, I can't remember how long ago it was, but probably eight to 10 years ago now, the golf course staff established an advisory board, and it consisted of five, I believe, five citizens that would, they would talk about issues related to the golf course, make, they would ask for recommendations on capital improvement projects that they were starting. They would talk about their budget, their revenues, the food and beverage side of the business. And the advisory board would then just give their input from a citizen's perspective. What I found over the years, and I was a member for that for many years, was that sometimes those actions of the advisory board wouldn't always trickle up to council. And it's no fault of any of the staff, it's just there's a lot going on. So I think it would benefit us as a board to, just like we are with a lot of other board, council representatives to things, to have a representative to that board. I would be happy to be considered. And it would benefit us, and I believe the overall operation at the course.
Well, thank you. Any questions? Might somebody wish to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Bales?
I move to appoint Councilmember Bales to the golf advisory board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. You have a lot of support out there.
Thank you.
To appoint Councilmember Bales as to the golf advisory board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is council time. And how about we start on the left side of the room tonight? And we'll start with Councilmember Karen.
Your Honor, I want to remind the public of Triat Truck coming up this Saturday between 10 and noon, excuse me. Bring out your kids. And of course, we do have more limitations due to the virus. They'll have to remain in the car, but they get to go along and see all the different vehicles. It's just a shame they can't get out and get up in them. I know last year, having the privilege, the opportunity to participate, it was really great to see families out and the kids enjoying all the different vehicles. So I just want to encourage all the citizens in Beaver Creek to come on out Saturday and bring the kids and try a truck and some goodies. Also, be a part of that program.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Kiwanis auction is going to be going live on October 6th. This year, it'll be virtual, so I encourage everyone to log on and kind of look at things. Apparently, we have a website that you can enter your maximum bid, and it will automatically bid for you. So you can start bidding on October 6th. On the 8th, it will have a live portion. I think it's going to go via Facebook Live, where we'll have a little bit of discussion about Kiwanis. If you're interested... about Kiwanis if you're interested, and the auction will close at 8:00 PM on the 8th. So I encourage everyone to participate. Clerk, I do have a question. I was looking at our agenda for next Monday, well, October 12th. That is a holiday. Are we still on the, okay, I just wanted to confirm that. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to thank Randy and staff again, especially counsel, for jumping in so quickly to make the changes to that ordinance today, especially because we did get all those calls. I think everyone kind of got the same input, so we appreciate that you were able to do that, and I think you ended up making some of those changes on the weekend. So I appreciate you taking some time away from your free time to work on this for us as well. And then also, we have an upcoming MBRPC meeting this Thursday morning, so I'm sure I'll have some more updates for you in the next few weeks after that. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Dura.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reiterate a point that Councilmember Schwartz made recently in regard to school zones. I've received a number of emails from parents just asking to slow down in that area. As the days are becoming shorter, it's tough to see kids out, and so just a friendly reminder to everyone to really try and slow down, take care of our kids. Second, I would like to welcome Basil's to Beaver Creek, formally opening at the Mall of Fairford Commons. The owner was very generous with his time in giving a number of us a tour of the facility a few months ago, and hardly welcomed them to Beaver Creek, an opening location here. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Councilmember Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. A week ago Monday, I spent some time out at Lefino Park for the fishing derby, and I wanted to say that the park was a beehive of activity. I mean, there were people everywhere, on the skate park, in the playgrounds, tennis courts, walking around the lake, and there were several people fishing. And so I just think that the Parks Department needs a little bit of a commendation because thinking outside the box with regard to recreation and programming and how it can happen during COVID, and everybody was enjoying themselves, and it was just great. And then last week, I was honored to play golf with Vice Mayor Adams in the USA Patriots Veterans Golf Event. It was at Beaver Creek Golf Club, and it was a real tremendous success. They raised funds for the Dayton Warriors Amputee Softball Organization, which is a fantastic organization, and I'd like to recognize a couple of Beaver Creek residents, Scott Kuhn and Bob Darden, the high school, Air Force Junior ROTC, and all the other volunteers that were out there putting on that event. I thought it was fantastic. I had a note to thank the citizens we talked to over the weekend, so again, it's good to have those open conversations about issues, and Randy, again, thanks for your support there. Finally, and I know that we're going to talk about it a little later, but the Fair Funding Committee is going to be hosting another Zoom meeting this Thursday evening from 6:30 to 7:30 to talk about the proposed income tax. And so I have included a link on my Facebook page if anybody wants to find information out about that. Pete Bales, Beaver Creek City Council Facebook page. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After the schedule, it's alphabet soup. I think if it continues, we're going to be like the hurricanes and get into the Greek alphabet with the numbers, but that's okay. I want to do, congratulations to Councilman Bales and his wife, who celebrated their anniversary last Friday.
Thank you.
As we were playing golf, so.
[laughter]
Probably were these. Excuse me. Couple of weeks ago, the mayor and I attended a ribbon cutting at the new acclaimed senior activity center on Indian Ripple Road. We're really pleased to welcome this company to Beaver Creek. What they do is provide senior daycare for seniors and to give a respite to caregivers, which I think is sorely needed if, I know my wife was a caregiver at one time for her mother, and it's a lot of effort and stress and things like that going into it, so having an opportunity to get a break is great. As Councilman Bales said, Beaver Creek Parks and Recreation had the fishing derby at Lefino's Park. I was out there for several days, was able to spend a lot of time during the derby speaking to several families. A lot of questions come up, and, but the one big thing, the overwhelming response was to thank the Parks Department, Mr. Thonero, Kim, and Aaron for everything they did to make it possible. As I said, it was, with COVID, everything's been canceled, but you gave them a chance to have some normalcy, and they really appreciated that, so. And I know the Triat Truck, as Councilman Curran talked about, is this weekend, and it's going to be a lot different than in the past, but please try to come out and participate in that as well. I was able to attend the first class of the Citizens Police Academy, class number 18, last Wednesday, and welcomed the students. They'll spend the next seven weeks learning about our police department. And I want to thank Chief Evers and Deputy Chief Fiorida for allowing that to go on this year, because I think that's really important to let people understand more and more, especially in today's environment, what the police department's all about. Also, in those conversations, a lot of people brought up questions about the income tax that's on the ballot. I'd like to address about three of them tonight, and then I have another thing at the end of that. So the first one is, can City Council increase the income tax without approval of the voters? The answer to that is no. Thank you. We have two documents that prevent the City Council from increasing the tax. The City Charter and the Ohio Revised Code states that residents must vote on a change in the rate of the income tax. City Charter says in Item 1005, "The council shall have no power to adopt and levy a city income tax without a majority vote of the electors voting on such a levy." And the ORC states in 718-04, "Except as and provided in Division B of this section, no municipal corporation shall levy a tax on income at a rate in excess of 1% without having obtained the approval of a majority of the electors in the municipality voting on the question at a general primary or special election." Section B just states if there was a tax rate greater than 1% on March 23rd, 2015, it could continue. That's not the case in Beaver Creek, so we do not, as a council, or we have the right to increase the tax rate above 1% without approval of voters. Second question is, is there an income tax credit for those already paying in other cities' income tax? The answer to that is yes. Beaver Creek residents who work in a city other than Beaver Creek are paying the income tax for that city will receive 100% credit if the amount of that city's income tax is greater than 1%. Chapter 39.081 of the City Beaver Creek Income Tax Ordinance states, "If a resident of the municipality is subject to a municipal tax in other municipalities as well as in the city of Beaver Creek, he shall not pay a total municipal income tax on the same income greater than the tax imposed at the highest rate in which he is subject." And the income tax credit, which may be equal to but not exceed 100% of the tax owed by the taxpayer as set forth in this section, shall not be changed without first obtaining the approval of the change by a majority of the electors of the city of Beaver Creek at a general election. And the third question that come up, and will residents be allowed to provide input into how funds are utilized in the city in the future? All of our budget meetings, as well as all of our meetings, are done in public. Anyone interested in attending the meetings can do so and listen to what is being discussed and provide input. The city will expand the open budgetary process, allowing for public input through the various steps of the annual budgeting process, as Mr. Casera spoke to earlier. And council is determined that the residents' input will even be more critical in the overall success of the use of the alternative revenue. Residents can attend and have input at the tax budget meetings held in July. This is a public hearing. The all-day strategic planning work session in July, August timeframe, two budget meetings, work sessions in November, to the budget adoption meeting, which is a public hearing in December, or at any city council meeting during the citizens' comment time. These meetings are held on the second and fourth Monday of each month, except for December, when we only have the one meeting. All of these meetings are posted on the website with time and location. There should be a special edition of the In Touch newsletter. It should be arriving in your mailbox later this week. Please look it over, and if you have a question or need additional information or resources, please visit the city's website at www.bevercreekohio.gov and click the Proposed Income Tax tab, or you can also email your questions to incometax@beavercreekohio.gov. On a similar note, a question was brought up over the weekend about the new property valuations that were sent out by Green County and how would it affect their property taxes. First, this reevaluation of property values is mandated by the Ohio Revised Code. This is not something the city of Beaver Creek does. In our case, the Green County Auditor is the assessor of all of the real estate in the county for tax purposes. The auditor is charged with viewing and appraising each parcel of real estate at its estimated fair market value on both land and improvements every six years and updated every three years. Green County will complete sex annual reevaluation by the end of 2020 with tax adjustments reflected in the tax bill sent out in 2021. The city of Beaver Creek does not receive more money from the current voter-approved property tax levies if the valuation of homes in Beaver Creek increases. We are on fixed-rate levies, and the only way that that could result in an increase in funds for the city is if there are new homes built. If the home valuation is increased, it actually results in a decrease of the effective tax rate paid by the homeowners. Fixed-rate levies are approved by the voters, and the most common type of levy, fixed-rate levies can only generate additional income if new construction occurs. If you have any other questions, please don't hesitate to refer to the items I spoke to earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's, I want to encourage that as well, that people take a little extra time and try to, and try to figure out the complicated role of the property tax and how it relates to the city and how it relates to the proposed income tax, because it is not a boom for the city that the evaluations went up. You know, there are organizations that have large inside millages, and that will help them because they're not a voted millage, but almost all of Beaver Creek's millage is voted, in which case it is, as Don said, a fixed dollar amount. It has nothing to do, if your property tax went down, I mean, if your appraisal went down, you would still pay that same dollar amount, but it's just all related to future levies and new construction. So please try to understand that this, this does not relieve the pressures that the city faces for funding. The reevaluation doesn't, so take a serious look at the property tax proposal because it is something that is needed. Earlier tonight, we approved that resolution to apply for a grant to buy 100 acres of parkland, and that's, you know, the COVID situation we've been going through, as others have spoken about, just shows how important our parks are. And so it is just a, it's a reaction that we need to take. Every development that comes through, we have people that say, let's keep open space, let's don't develop. And the only way we can do that is to buy land, buy that open space, or some private party can buy that open space. So this is a big step, and let's all keep our fingers crossed that we get that grant, matching grant, and we can pick up, 100 acres is not a piece of pie, that's a nice little chunk. And somebody mentioned Basil's opened today, and they did, up at the mall, with no fanfare to speak of yet. They may have a grand opening later on, but in our continued communication with the surrounding cities, the four mayors had their lunch there today. So I was the host today, and so we met at Basil's, and I will say one thing, order the bread basket. But no, the food was fantastic, so I welcomed them to open in our city. That said, I would like to turn it over to the city manager for his report.
I was going to say, Mayor, normally you give me an invite to, when you host, but I didn't, my phone didn't ring today. You held back on me. I would like to echo one thing on the appraisals, just to give you an actual number, so to speak, or a percentage. 90% of our property tax revenue, 90% of our tax, property tax revenue are in the fixed levies, our voted levies. So it's only a very small portion of the inside millage, the general fund, that receives a change when an appraisal goes up or down. The general fund either increases or decreases based on the evaluation, but that only represents, you know, 10% or less of the total funding of property tax that we receive. So it's very minor, and that's the part, general fund, of course, that funds general government, council, finance, HR, planning department, and such activities as that that are not funded by levies, because everything else is levy-driven. So just wanted to actually point that out. So thank you guys for, council for doing, saying that. I want to go to just a couple quick announcements. This has already been posted to our Facebook page and is the roadwork on, as Dayton-Zenia is going, I have to go that way home, so if anybody, I'm in this, okay? I live out in the Summerfield-Wagner-Trace area, so this 100% impacts me. So you have the Dayton-Zenia, for those that know, the Kemp Road Bridge that goes across 675 on Kemp has been closed, well, not closed, but it's down to one lane, and they have a temporary light there. Well, ODOT is doing the same thing, not the, not closing it, but the reducing it to two lanes on Dayton-Zenia. So the bridge, the big bridge that goes across 675 there will be down to two lanes, starting on Wednesday, September 30th. So just at that area and Stedman, it's going to be, go from four lanes through there to two. And that's ODOT performing maintenance work on the bridge, requiring these lane restrictions. Work expected to take the four to six weeks to complete. So ODOT is really busy, and it's good, we want this. It's been long overdue on the bridge works and, of course, on 675, the road work. So it's just all at once. And then, of course, on up the street from there, going west, or going east from there, the contractor for the Dayton-Zenia Road Project, Road Whitening, is planning to begin the work this week. If you have noticed, if you've driven up by Dayton-Zenia, they have the big pipes, the concrete pipes, stormwater pipes and everything have already been delivered. Equipment is being staged and set, they're ready to rock and roll. So they're going to start doing some digging and temporary pavement and, you know, the storm sewer and preparing for temporary pavement construction. So just want to warn you, you know, for short periods of time, there could be flaggers, or there was today, as are moving equipment, so just be careful, be safe, watch your speed through there, and watch for flaggers and, you know, just people and the equipment in the road, because it could be a dangerous situation. Just want to let everybody know, it's that time of year, fall, and with fall comes falling leaves, which a lot came off the trees earlier because of the drought that we've kind of had, but just want to let you know that City Beaver Creek, we still get calls at City Hall all the time wanting to know when we pick up leaves. We don't. We do not have staff or equipment to do so, but you can contract your trash hauler to see if they take them. You also compost pile, that's an effort that some people can do. And also, Green County Environmental Services that, on Greenway Boulevard in Zenia, also takes debris, yard debris, including leaves. So please utilize them, it's free to do leaves there. And just another, we mentioned parks. Thank you guys for your compliments on the parks. We do have an awesome park staff. They are really doing, as well as the senior staff, doing a lot of out-of-the-box ideas and not wanting to shut everything down. You know, we're trying to say, how can we safely do something? And so great ideas on what they've done. Part of that is park shelters. Park shelters are available on the first come for serve basis, but reservations can be made by phone at least three days prior to requested date, and that's at the 427-5514 or online. There's no use, no charge for the use of shelters. These are great to, you know, we ask people, you know, you can have family units, though, that can gather, but we still ask that you obey the COVID guidelines from CDC and from the state. But we have shelters available at Dominic Lefino Park on Grange Hall, EJ Nutter Park on Factory Road, Rotary Park, of course, on Dayton-Zenia Road, and Shout Park on Meadowbridge Drive. So take advantage of these. COVID's not always going to be around, so hopefully as it, we develop a cure and a vaccination or we can get back to some normalcy on this and... or we can get back to some normalcy on this and enjoy your park system, including the shelters. And that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, it's time for citizen comment. I have a comment here this evening that would like to address council. It is citizen, you didn't come over and turn it on. Okay. At this point, it's citizen comment time. Is there anyone present that would like to address council to discuss any issue? Seeing none, we will move on. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.